I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Here.
Trustee Vaughn?
Here.
All right, we're all here. Moving on, public participation, if there's any member of the public that's here that would like to address the board, this is your two-minute opportunity. If you would like to speak about, if you're a petitioner on an item that we will be talking about, you don't have to come up now, you can come up during your item, but if there's anybody else that would like to speak. Hearing none, we'll move on. We have two proclamations this evening designating May 3rd through 9th, 2015 as Municipal Clerks' Week. I will read the first one and entertain a motion for approval. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk is a time honored and vital part of local government that exist in countries throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is the most, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Matt Brawley, Village President of the Village of Montgomery, who hereby proclaim May 3rd through May 9th, 2015, as Municipal Clerks' Week, and further extend our appreciation to our village clerk Tiffany Francis, and our deputy clerk Debbie Buchanan, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to the second proclamation this evening, which is designating April as Distracted Driving Awareness Month. Whereas distracted driving claims the lives of thousands of people each year and causes hundreds of thousands of injuries, and whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reports that 94 percent of car crashes are a result of driver error, and whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control, 69 percent of U.S. drivers ages 18 to 64 say they have talked on their phone while driving, and 31 percent say they have read or sent email or text messages while driving, and whereas the Illinois Department of Transportation designates April as Distracted Driving Awareness Month in Illinois, and whereas the improved health and well-being of all citizens are a direct result of increased awareness about the dangers of distracted driving, and whereas the Illinois Department of Transportation is committed to reducing the number of traffic deaths and injuries in Illinois by educating motorists to bring awareness to dangerous driving behaviors, and whereas the campaign against distracted driving has also been immensely aided by corporate and law enforcement efforts in Illinois, and whereas a month dedicated to programs and activities about distracted driving will greatly raise awareness. Further, let it be resolved that I, Matt Brawley, Village President, do hereby proclaim April as Distracted Driving Awareness Month in the Village of Montgomery. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Awesome. Thank you. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. I'll read the items and then we'll entertain a motion for approval. We have the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of March 17th, executive session minutes of March 17th, minutes of the Village Board Meeting of March 23rd, executive session minutes of March 23rd, accounts payable through April 2nd, 2015, accounts payable through April 9th of 2015, the accounts receivable report for February of 2015, the accounts receivable report for March of 2015, and the cancellation of the April 21st Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Moved by Spurling, second by Marisak, call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. Items for separate action, item A, we have Ordinance 1664, adopting the annual operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year, fiscal year 2016? It says 2015-16, but fiscal year 2016, which starts May 1. With that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director, Justin, for a summary of the entire budget.
Thank you, Village President Brawley. There have been no changes to the operating and capital improvement budget since it was presented for first reading at the last meeting. The total budget for this year is, the total approved budget for this year is $25 million, is approximately $25 million, and with that, I could take any questions as the board will have.
Could you summarize what the plan is for the, I guess, the frozen amounts that we're waiting to see what the governor does down in Springfield later this year, what our plan is for that?
Any of the amounts that have been identified will be frozen as of May 1. We will not, if it's a particular item that's on that list, we will not expend those monies until after we know what the state is going to do, so that will be, whenever the state approves the budget, that's when we'll identify what is actually going to be cut, so.
And to clarify, when we prepared the list, Justin and I, that was to give you an idea of the magnitude of what we'll be looking for, depending on what the governor does. Doesn't mean those are the cuts. Once we know what the governor's doing, we'll come back to the board and, you know, look to you guys to see what we're, what we need to take out of the budget, if we need to take anything out, so.
So just the amount was frozen, is what you're saying?
We're freezing amounts on several things, it's so that we haven't spent that money, so we have those items to look for, you know, as places to cut, but what actually gets cut will be up to, you know, up to you guys.
What if we have to expend, if some of those items, we should do that expenditure, spend that money prior to the state ever having their budget in place?
And some of those we may have to look at and address as they come. I mean, some of them are pretty flexible, some of the amounts, so we should be okay, but if, if we're reaching a deadline where it's, we'd spend it now, or we'd be past for, for some reason, you know, if it's tree planting and we're getting past the fall, state better have the budget done by then. Just saying, you know, nobody in particular. Then we would come back to the board and, you know, have that discussion.
Okay. We're running, we're running a budget surplus this year, correct?
We are projecting in the general fund a surplus of approximately $185,000.
Which is nice, but I don't want to dwell on that too much because...
No, I'm just, I'm looking at Stan. You know where I'm going with this. What, how do you, what's your feeling on that?
Probably for another discussion, but my feeling is still the same.
The full amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would like to see the tree portion funded, the full $90,000 as well. I believe there's, what, 42, 44 in there now? But apparently, we can bring that up for discussion as we get closer to the fall and kind of see what the state does.
Any other comments or questions on the budget?
I have a question. The vehicle reserve, we talked about holding off on doing those purchases for the vehicles, and we had the two critical items for Public Works. Were we going to be moving forward with those, because if we didn't move...
Those two items are later in the agenda tonight, so we are looking to move forward on those two vehicles so that we have them, hopefully for plow season, but those are the only two right now.
Any motions?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Lee, second by Trustee, or by...
Youngerman.
Him and him. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
And that carries 6-0, thank you. This caps off, I don't know how many public meetings we have on the budget, but for those of you that are here this evening, we have a multitude of budget meetings publicly between February and today, and the budget's been online for the last several months as well, so it's nice to have a budget going into the budget season or the new fiscal year. All right, moving on to item B, which is a recommendation of Plan Commission on PC 2015-002, special use for convalescent nursing and rest home located at 2231 Hagaman Lane, Bethesda Lutheran Communities. With that, I'll ask Director Young for a summary on the item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have before you the recommendation from the Plan Commission on 2130, I'm sorry, 2231 Hagaman Lane, Bethesda Lutheran Communities, has established a use in that, in that location that does require a special use under the R4 zoning district. The district itself includes a special use category of convalescent nursing and rest home facilities. That is the closest text that we would have within the zoning ordinance to address the type of facility that, I believe the applicants are here tonight, that they can explain the use that is a 24-hour care for four individuals that currently reside at this location. The Plan Commission did make a recommendation to approve the special use, subject to reserving the right to implement any appropriate codes in the event that any licensing changes occur, excuse me, and to include a report from community development. And in that report, we outlined that we've attempted to get confirmation from the Department of Human Services for the state that this is an appropriate licensed operation. It's been difficult at best to get some straight answers from the state agency, however, we believe that they have verbally, and we'd like to get it in writing, a confirmation that this location meets all of the criteria of the state in terms of having this type of facility. So with that, if you'd like, the applicants are here tonight and can explain their operation.
Yeah, if you guys...
Did you get a letter from Human Resources?
No, sir.
Well, I thought it would be passed on the condition that they have a letter from Human Resources.
Tonight, you're not passing anything.
Okay.
This is, this is the recommendation from the Plan Commission, and you're accepting that, or you're taking in that recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Okay, Rich, thank you.
No action would be on this item from this body until at least two weeks from now.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Jewison, I am the area director for Bethesda Lutheran Communities, and tonight, we have, we want to...
Carol.
Yes, this is Carol. Carol is one of the residents who live in the home.
Home.
Yeah, at 2231 Hagaman. Do you want to talk about your house and answer questions? Would you like to?
Yeah.
Yeah? Well, what I can tell you is I can just confirm that there are four people that live in the home. We are a service provider, Bethesda, and the people that live there have chosen to receive services from us.
We choose to live there.
Yep, you choose to live there. They are the tenants on the lease, so the four individuals that actually live at that home were responsible for signing the lease with the homeowner. That was something that they picked out after a series of several different places, right?
Yeah.
Do you like where you live?
Yeah.
Do you like the people you live with? Most of the time?
Most of the time.
Sorry, I like my family most of the time, too. Yeah, do you, and you want Bethesda to provide services to you?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Carol, you want to tell us how you cook? How do you cook, huh?
I cook eggs in the morning and cook for the people in the house.
Yeah, they don't like to help out very much, do they?
No.
Yeah, Carol lives with three gentlemen, and they're all good friends, and Carol, yes, Carol takes care of everybody at the house. She tells staff what to do, she tells me what to do. I've worked in the house several times, and it's a lot of fun. She keeps me up at night when I work the overnight, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we also have with us, who is that?
Sarah.
And what does Sarah do?
The house director.
Yep, she's the program director.
Program director.
So she's responsible for scheduling all the staff that come to work with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, what else does she do? She's the big boss, right?
We budget our money, we get our hair done.
Yeah, yeah, you get to get your hair done. She helps you with budgeting money and stuff like that. Who does all the cleaning at your house primarily? Me. Yes, yes, and do you like your room?
Yeah.
You got a pretty nice room, don't you? With the big jacuzzi tub.
Jacuzzi tub.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome.
Carol, you work too, don't you?
Yeah.
What do you do?
We're in the office.
In, in what town?
Flameville.
Yeah, yeah, you sure do. What do you do at the office?
Clean, clean office.
And you do, you shred papers, right?
Shred paper.
And file?
File.
Have you been answering the phone?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay, all right, that's all right. You can answer the phone, anytime you'd like, so. Any, any other questions?
Any questions from the board?
I do have some questions, if I may.
Yes, please.
Who is the owner of this property?
Ms. Rivera.
And is she residing at the property?
No, no, she does not. She actually, she just moved recently, she lives in towards the city.
What, what's her occupation?
You know, I don't know what she does, I'm not sure.
So there are four residents, and then there's a live-in?
There is no live-in staff, no.
So there's just the four residents?
Just the four residents, yep. Yep, typically, the staff work in eight-hour shifts, and we have a full-time day staff who works seven to three, and she kind of fills like the lead role there, so she helps with budgeting, she helps you guys with like your monthly meetings, she does menu planning with you, takes you grocery shopping, stuff like that.
Yeah.
The people that live in the home, they have a lot of different things going on. One gentleman works at Jewel in Sugar Grove, so, I mean, a lot of what the staff does is driving people around and taking them to work, stuff like that, helping them if they want help with meals, but everyone's very independent, able to cook for themselves. They really just kind of hang out, I mean, I love being at the house, just kind of hang out, see people where they need to go and, you know, do what they want to do.
So, did, was there a Bethesda-type organization involved prior to this moment, or how did this group of people come together and settle in this house?
Well, I mean, I guess it's a whole host of different things. Carol was actually living at another facility...
Silla.
Another silla up in Freeport, and she decided that she wanted to move to this area to be closer to her family, right? And so she was identified as a person to live kind of in that area. We have, one of the gentlemen goes to school full-time, his, his parents sought us out as a residential service provider. He came and met with us, and we determined, you know, his needs and his wants, and like I said, just based off that, we helped people find housing that they wanted. We have another gentleman, the one that I was referring to that worked at the Jewel in Sugar Grove, he was living in another silla, it was an eight-bed facility, and he said that he too wanted to live in a smaller environment. He and Carol have known each other for a long time.
Who were, who were these people saying this to, to Bethesda, or...
Their case managers, myself, the program directors, I mean, anybody that works with them, we're all a very close-knit group.
At what point did you recognize that you needed to ask for a special use to perform this kind of activity?
Well, you know, it, it all varies, based on different cities that you live in, there, there are some cities in which this is not required. We were actually approached by the village and told that because we had four people, four adults who were non-related living together, we needed to apply for a special use. So I took on the liberty of doing that for the people that live at the home.
And DHS has some involvement in this? At what point are they notified?
DHS, well, they, they were notified that we were going to be serving everybody because we have to fill out these silla rate packets. It's just a process that the case managers fill out, numerous sheets of paperwork that is submitted. It's all based on testing scores, ICAPs, risk assessment, stuff like that, and that determines the person's funding, and they receive an award letter stating how much they'll receive in, in funds every, on an annual basis, to help provide for the services and the care that they need. And then based on that, I mean, you have to put in a physical address when a location is sought out. The state does grant additional funds for smaller residential settings, so Carol's rate did, you receive more money, remember, we talked about that?
Yeah.
For moving into a smaller setting, but then ultimately, like, like I said, you know, the people choose their service providers, we're just lucky enough to be their service provider, so.
Does your use plan involve the basement?
Um, we, I mean, we certainly have a basement, it's non, it's not finished, we don't do any, I mean, you guys get on there if there's a tornado warning or something like that, but other than that, what's in your basement? Is there anything down there?
No.
I haven't been down there in a couple weeks, so.
You don't go down there?
Yeah, there's an emergency food supply down there.
Emergency food down there.
Yeah, we do have fire extinguishers on each level, just to ensure everybody's safety. There's an evacuation plan posted out there, but yeah, I mean, other than that, the maintenance, we have a maintenance professional who comes in who does, like, helps change out the furnace filter, stuff like that.
One last question, and maybe I should direct it to our attorney, and it's a question regarding standing. Should, should the petitioner be the property owner, or the residents of the facility, or Bethesda? I'm, I'm looking for an opinion as to whether Bethesda is the right standing for this petition.
Well, I guess I'd, I'd first ask who is the petitioner on record, I mean, who filled out the forms? Bethesda's? Typically, it's either the owner or somebody with an, an ownership interest, in other words, a tenant, a prospective buyer, all of those people have the ability to do that. However, I don't think that we have to stand on form on that unless you wish to. Certainly Bethesda is representing the interests of the individuals.
Who would we serve if we had a need to serve?
In the event of some code compliance, that would either be the owner or the tenants, and it sounds like there's a lease, we'd probably start with tenants.
I, I would be more comfortable if the petitioner were the property owner or the tenants. To me, Bethesda's a third party that could be replaced by the same process that they're being brought in.
That's fine, and that could be amended on the application if that was the direction of the board.
And we're listed on the rental agreement as the guarantor of funds, and as such, we were asked to be the ones that filled out the petition.
That puts the residents, though, in a, kind of a difficult position, if they were to decide they don't want your service anymore, you're integrally tied into this agreement.
Wouldn't the special use, the special use is granted to the parcel?
Correct.
So if Bethesda is no longer providing them the service, this, they would...
We would secure our funds for the lease, so we would bring in somebody else to, to fill that vacancy.
Right, but if they remained in the house and chose a different service provider, the house would still have a special use?
Correct, assuming it's granted.
Well, not if the petitioner, in my mind, were Bethesda, they wouldn't, because there are agreements with Bethesda.
No, it's not an agreement, remember, the petitioner is simply who is asking for the relief. Once the relief is granted, it's always granted to the property, so that, for example, when you ask for a special use for your home to get a fence where you might not otherwise have one, if you later sell that property, the special use continues even though you have since moved on.
Do you have any other facilities like this that you are a service provider to in the area?
Several.
And they're single-family homes? Cool. This is new to me, so that's...
And, and you know, just so that you know, you have, I mean, I know that Jared Timmin reached out to Day One Network just to find out what's going on. There are multiple sillas being operated in the village, or in the city of Montgomery by other agencies.
Okay.
AID is one of them, Little City is another.
Mm-hmm.
This is, this is a standard practice that is going on throughout the community.
And I'm assuming we had a public use for this special here, special use?
Yeah.
Public hearing for the special use? Was there anybody that came out to speak for or against it?
I was not at the Plan Commission meeting, and I can't...
I was at both of them, and there was people that showed up, they answered their questions, and they did not speak. And the last one, when it came to vote, there was one gentleman who they've already talked to, and he was happy with it, too. I think, in fact, the one comment we want to make on, where they said a lot of these places have four families living in them and eight cars, and they were very happy that this family was living in them with, you know, one car and four people. Bethesda Lutheran, me being Lutheran, will know a little more about it, they're a national organization, they've been around, they're in Wisconsin, they're all over the place. They used to own the CSC, which is the Child Service Center for East Aurora on Molitor Road, I think it is, which was a huge for retirement, and they gave that up because they couldn't afford it, and they, they sold it to East Aurora, and East Aurora uses it for their childhood preschool right now. But there's a lot of them around, we're not the only town that has a Bethesda Lutheran, it's just, and it's supported by the Lutherans, and if Carol didn't want to live there, then somebody else, they'd move somebody else in, there's almost a waiting list probably for four people, but Carol likes it here, so she's...
You don't want to move, do you?
No, she don't want to move.
Nobody likes moving, yeah.
And we really can't base our decision on the four people that are there now, another four people may come in that have eight cars, or a whole different situation.
None of these people drive, I mean, they're not, that's why they have a, a person that comes in the day and takes them to work and drives them to Sugar Grove and, and drives her to her job. I mean, that's why they have the one person they hire to do this.
And how long, how long have these four individuals lived in the home?
Since September of last year.
September, and we haven't had any issues or anything? That's my, my only concern, is the residents in that area that bought in a single-family area, just to make sure that they're receiving the same, I guess, quality of subdivision or quality of neighborhood that they thought when they bought, and I don't see that to be...
She walked around and talked to the neighbors, is that correct?
I, yes.
Yeah.
Sarah and myself went and did meet greets with all the neighbors, everybody that we sent letters to, just to tell them a little bit about Bethesda, what we do, tell them about the people that we support, and, yeah, I mean, we received a lot of praise, just, and we had, you know, people complaining about other homes in the neighborhood having, like you said, eight families living in them and multiple cars parked everywhere. We've had a really good response since moving in there, we had people that come over and they'll beat us out there to snowball the driveways, and, yeah, I mean, it's been really great.
Awesome.
I have one last question for the attorney, if I may. The description that's used by Bethesda to describe this activity is community-integrated living arrangement?
Yeah, it's a silla.
Could we incorporate that understanding into our special use when we vote on it? The, the broad category of convalescent and nursing, presumably, the special use would rise to that level unless we define it more carefully.
You can, you can tailor your special use as you deem appropriate.
I, I think the, the broad description is way too broad and not appropriate for a neighborhood.
And that's actually, one of my concerns is just, there's four residents there now. How do we, can we write that into the special use, some limitations, so that there isn't eight people? Or when the next one happens? But I, I researched Bethesda and did some investigating and checked, and you guys are, it sounds like it's a top-notch organization, financials are in order, and the monies are going to the right places, but when the next one comes, that we don't have some kind of a parameter to limit that there's not 12 people, that they don't finish the basement, and there's four more residents down in the basement? Is that something we can write into the ordinance?
It is, although I would suspect with... It is, although I would suspect, without having done the research, that your building codes already limit the number of people who can reside in a house based on size.
It's, yeah, it's pretty broad.
Is it?
It's really broad, when I checked into it before.
That's where the state would actually come in, and they regulate that. So when we fill out those funding packets, we can't have more than one person per bedroom. So we could never move more than four people into the house at Hagman. It is solely, you know, in all the paperwork, it is a for president, residential setting.
And this is strictly, this is strictly for a special use for this one location. In other words, if there was another one pop up, another special use, so.
Let's go back, though, to your question, then. So can you specify in the special use the number of occupants in this building? The answer is still yes, you can.
She's represented to us, and I'm inclined to agree, that there are several similar activities occurring in Montgomery right now that we're unaware of. And I'm hopeful that those folks will come, as you have, to get the correct permission and credentials to do what they're doing. So we're going to have to make this decision several times, and we may as well be consistent about it.
I'd, I'd like to hit on what, what you said, Stan. I heard something earlier that if there are four unrelated people living in a house, it requires a special use. Doesn't matter if they're special needs, doesn't matter, it shouldn't matter either way. If there's four unrelated people living in a house, it requires a special use. Is that correct?
I, well, I'd have to look specifically at it. Laura, do you want to speak to that?
Just with regard to the sillas and general, perhaps you can clarify, if there's more than a certain number of people, though, that triggers an entirely different living arrangement, doesn't it, under the statute?
Well, no, because we do have eight bed sillas, but, um, it, the, the funding model is different for anything above four. But they do have, I mean, we talked about this at the, at the meeting last week or two weeks ago. They do, the state does commit and do surveys and monitor things and make sure that everything is.
But once there's more than a certain number of people, like you said, there's extra bedroom requirements, and there's more state regulation than if there's only four people in a single-family home. That gets triggered a higher standard.
Yes.
Could we contact the state and ask them, when they're making inspections in Montgomery, to notify us of that use?
We can, we can ask.
I don't think that they will go forward with that solely because the way that this is set up is it's four people that chose to live together, that have signed a lease together. So therefore, I mean, you're imposing things upon them that you wouldn't impose upon anybody else. I mean, if you were going to grant a special use permit for four non-related people to live together, it's as if you're picking them out because they have special needs.
Well, should we argue the point, then, of whether we have the authority to consider this a special use? Is that your point, or?
I mean, but this is the only time that we've had to do this. So we're not having to do this in our Aurora locations, our Naperville locations, uh, Joliet locations. This is the only.
Sing, to me, single-family home, the zoning that you're in, single-family home, is a pretty descriptive title.
I think, if you don't have home rule, you can't, if, speak to me, lawyer, go ahead. Home rule, you.
Sure, so the sillas, there, there's a lot of statutory regulations, and primarily, these are regulated by DHS. And DHS really has the heavy hand in, you know, deciding exactly how much regulation or whether it's a home. There's also a lot of case law on point that talks about treating sillas are long-recognized uses for communities in residential areas. So really, what the primary concern here was, was with regard to the village's zoning code and making sure the residents of the silla were safe. That was really why this came up as a special use as a nursing home, is making sure that if there was any ADA or any such accommodations in that way, to make sure that everyone there's safe, the fire code's safe. And again, that's something that really falls under DHS's purview, and the village's point was just to make sure that DHS signs off and says that the village has no further regulation that they have to do. So it's really more a matter of the zoning regulation, the safety regulation, rather than the actual nature of the use.
Well, we did have to have a public hearing, and we invited people to offer their comments, so, in, in the scenario you described, their comments are irrelevant. I'd hate to tell our public that.
No, I mean, I don't think that that's the case, but you have to look at it, this is a very different entity because it's a creature of the statute. It's a creature of the DHS. So you, it's not treated the same way as any other special use might be treated, because there is a lot of state preemption that doesn't apply to all sorts of special uses.
So, so to kind of draw us back in here, the, if, and I saw Rich shaking his head, if we, if there was four unrelated individuals, you know, not this petitioner, that lived anywhere in the village, would we require a special use of that?
No. The, the village zoning ordinance states that a family is one person or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption, or a group of not more than five persons, not so related, maintaining a common household in a dwelling unit.
Yeah.
So you could technically, the way I read that, and I'd ask for Steve's guidance, but I'd read that, that five non-related people can live together in one single-family home.
Correct, and I, I think what happened here was that this, this process, once we got word that the silla was here, somewhat evolved. In other words, it began at one point, but as we started to learn more about the nature of the use, the, the fact that it more complied, as far as our zoning code, with the convalescent or nursing home, uh, structure, that that's where the special use came in. And as Laura said, we're trying to really synthesize two different things, state regulations and the local zoning code. Both, both are valid, both are enforceable, but they do overlap, and in some places, there is preemption, that she talked about, by the state to the local level. But that doesn't change the fact that we still needed the special use per our own ordinance. So when we talk about the fact that we had a public hearing, it was very appropriate that we have one, and the, the public's input is never irrelevant. It is relevant, not to the granting or denying, but to what, if any, conditions need to be imposed to address the special use.
So we don't need a special use because there's four people, unrelated people, living in the house? We need the special use because it's a convalescent or nursing home?
Yes.
Could, is it also a business? There's money changing hands?
That's, I, I suppose one could argue that both ways, depending on their situation, but that typically doesn't factor into a zoning analysis.
Similar to a rental, kind of. But I, I, I can appreciate that we, as the village, you know, Bethesda's not going to do anything or, or put their clients in a situation that's unsafe or unhealthy, but not everybody would be so responsible. And I think that's an avenue where we can help, is to, when we know about these, to make sure that the four individuals who are residents of our, of our community now, and we thank you guys for being here and moving into the greatest village in the world, but also making sure that we are protecting them so that they're not moving into an unsafe, unsafe situation. And this is a very unique special use to this parcel, and if there are others, we'll go through that at that time. And I can appreciate both sides of this, that we want to make sure and do what's appropriate for this house, for these residents, but also for the entire street. Because if I lived next door to something that could become a problem, I'd want to know about that, and that's why I ask at the public hearing if we had people speak for or against it. So everything that I'm hearing, I appreciate the conversation. Everything that I'm hearing sounds like we have responsible individuals involved with this house, with the Bethesda, and also our, our residents that we have. And, and thank our staff for being vigilant on this, and this came to our attention, so we're, we're trying to do our best to keep everybody safe in Montgomery, so.
Just to add, that recently I had cause to be in the neighborhood, walking around and visiting with folks, and I had three different folks that were in complete support of the facility. So spoke highly and passionately about it being in the neighborhood.
Yeah, like, like I said.
They, actually, the one person made the comment, their only hope is that the residents actually come outside and engage with the neighborhood.
It's been so cold, hasn't it?
Yeah, well, and that was the, the preemptive was, the snow prevented a little bit, but they were excited about them being there, so.
Okay. You guys have anything else to add?
Anything else? All eyes on you.
I like my house.
Yeah, I like your house, too. You have a fantastic house. Yeah. Can you say thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so we have two items. One, we are going to hopefully take action on this evening, which is the recommendation of plant commission, that's item B, and then item C, which is the ordinance 1665, granting the special use that we will, this is the first reading, we'll take action on that two weeks from tonight. So with that, if there is a motion on the recommendation of plant commission, item B?
Motion, plant commission.
Second.
Motion and second, take the roll, please.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
I believe Bethesda's the wrong petitioner, and I vote no.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Okay, and that carries five one, thank you. And I appreciate you for stating the, the reason behind that, Stan. Like I said, ordinance 1665, we will take action on, at our next board meeting. So we thank you guys for coming. We will put this on for separate action for the next board meeting, and we'll see you guys in two weeks.
Just FYI, I will not be at the next board meeting, but I would vote in support of item C.
Thank you. All right, move on to item D and E. Item D is a recommendation of plant commission on PC 2015 dash 005Z regarding ground signs. It's a text amendment to section 12 of our zoning ordinance. And then I'll just read the E, which is the ordinance 1661, actually amending section 12 of our zoning ordinance. That is first reading, and we'll take action again in two weeks. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Young.
Thank you. This is, well, was an item before the plant commission last week. The item is to amend the text of the zoning ordinance for the sign code specifically for ground signs. As staff reviewed the number of different variances that have been granted over the last few years, we felt that was appropriate to bring the recommendation to the plant commission to make adjustments to the sign code. And in your packet, there's quite a lengthy section that goes into the current code on the left-hand side and the proposed code. What it boils down to basically is modifications of ground signs to bring them into compliance, the signs that were granted a variance, bring the code into compliance with what had been granted previously. And there are some examples of the signs in your packet in terms of the Speedway sign and the Walgreens sign, and the Walgreens sign that goes along with Aldi off of Orchard Road, and then the Speedway sign. The bottom line is, is that the staff is recommending that single-tenant building signs, ground signs, have a maximum height of eight feet and a maximum square footage of 80 square feet. Multiple-tenant signs could have a height, an overall height of 14 feet and a maximum size of 140 square feet. The section on electronic message boards would be changed so that instead of a message board being 50% of any given ground sign, it would be a maximum of 30% of any ground sign, and any message board would have to be in the lower half of that ground sign. Electronic message boards, change to have a static five-second display with no flashing, rolling, or display of movement of any kind. And again, that would be for, five seconds before it could change the copy. Those are changes to the current code in terms of electronic message boards, and it clearly defines how they would be operated. Again, it goes from a 50% electronic message board to a 30% of the ground sign. Those are the basic changes. There are some other cleanup language within the text regarding sign landscaping and elevations and setbacks. The plant commission recommendation was to approve the text amendment, so this, we'll come back to you in two weeks for action.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions?
Would we not have anybody in, that would conflict with this, correct, currently? With the rolling or scrolling signs? I don't.
I don't believe so.
I don't believe.
We'll work back on that more definitively next time. I don't believe so.
And anybody that would be in violation of that would be grandfathered? They wouldn't need to revise their sign to comply?
Correct.
And I would note that the 30% for the LEDs is consistent with other communities. I just went through this in Another World in Aurora, and theirs is at 30% right now. I believe that I read this, and in here you have the ground height as measured from the center line of the road or the edge of the road. Is that in this ordinance, too?
Yes.
That's something that I've struggled with in the past, when I was on plant commission years ago, that if your site is lower than the road, your six-foot sign would end up still being lower than the road, and so what's the point of having a sign? So I think this kind of tries to amend that, fix that a little bit, so, okay.
Question on, a question on brightness?
I'm sorry?
It, there, I'm not seeing any language that sets a standard for brightness.
I think that's a, um, a point that we should incorporate into the text amendment, and I, I apologize if that was missed, but there are lumen counts that are standard in the industry that we can definitely incorporate into that section.
But not to the max, some of the standards are pretty high.
Yes.
It's not Las Vegas, and.
We went through this previous town that I was part of, and, and we can set those standards at the medium-range level, and I, I don't remember what the lumen count is tonight, but I'll, I'll find out what that is.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the recommendation of plant commission, which is item D.
Motion, second.
Moved by trustee Spurling, second by trustee Marisak. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
And that's six zero. Item E is the ordinance 1666. We'll take action in two weeks, and we'll review the lumens item before that, so that'll be separate action as well. Moving on, item F this evening, which is professional services agreement with EEI for design and construction engineering services for Huntington Chase Road construction. And with that, I'll turn it over to our director of public works, Mike Povance.
Thank you, President Prowley. In your packet tonight is a professional services agreement with EEI to perform the design and construction engineering for the repair of the Huntington Chase subdivision roads. Some great news, the village has reached a tentative agreement with the bonding company for the settlement of the final road repairs after the builder went bankrupt. So this is the first step in the village then using those funds, again, once the final agreement is reached, to do the design and construction work on the streets in the subdivision. You can see in the paragraph, the project will consist of repair of curb and gutter, binder patching and rehabilitation on several roads, leveling binder, and then surface course installation throughout the subdivision. So by the time this project is done, you'll have brand-new surface on all the streets, which I'm sure everyone there is looking forward to. The estimated cost for this agreement would be $80,000 to EEI, and again, that would be for both the designs, that's preparation of the plans, the bidding and letting of the work, and then the construction engineering, which is the inspection, material inspections, et cetera. If you look near the back, it's not the second, the last, third, the last page, I suppose, is the project schedule. We hope to have the bidding and contracting work completed by the end of May, with construction starting late May, early June. So we'd like to get out of the gates quickly on this one and, and get the work done.
I'd open it up to questions.
I have a question for Administrator Zofol. Have we notified the HOA out there or the residents, let them know that we have reached an agreement and working on?
Not to my knowledge, we haven't let them know yet, since we haven't come to final agreement.
Okay.
But we, we certainly will.
Dan, we haven't talked about it publicly until this point, so if you could reach out to their HOA, I know that we spoke with them.
Kyle?
Last fall, they were very eager to get this done, and I talked to Stan about it this weekend as well. Once we know that we have the agreement on that agenda, if we can invite them to that meeting, or just let them know, you know, notify them, as such, they'll be very excited.
Please remember, though, until the deal is done, it's not done.
Right.
Sounds like Yogi Berra, not over till it's over.
Any comments or questions on the PSA? Hearing now, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Heinz and second by trustee Bond. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
That carries six zero, thank you. So all of these next ones, obviously are going to Director Povens, but how many of these, or any of these interrelated that you can talk about?
Well, G and H are companion items, and I and J would be companion items.
Okay.
So I think if I put G and H together, it'll, the discussion for the next two is very similar, so it's just slightly different equipment that we're requesting, so.
Okay, so go ahead with G and H, G is the waiver of bid and authorization to purchase one, twenty sixteen International seventy-four hundred tandem axle cab and chassis. And then the next one is waiver of bid, award of a contract to purchase one stainless steel V-box spreader, snow plow with pre-wetting system. Go ahead.
So, as President Brawley said, these two pieces go together, as you may remember, the reason we have two separate agenda items is I'm requesting purchasing from two separate contractors. The first item is what we call the cab and chassis, that's basically the truck without a dump body or anything, and the cab is the cab, I'm sure we're all familiar with that, and that would be an award of fifty-five, seven-eighty-seven, ninety-five to Thompson Truck and Trailer of Sterling, Illinois. And then the second item, H is for, and I do have to make a slight correction here, I put one stainless steel V-box spreader. This is the tandem axle truck, this is the bigger of the truck, it will actually be constructed with a dump body and a tailgate spreader. So I apologize for the error when I was preparing this. That is explained in the bids and the quotes that are attached, the title is slightly different, so I just want to be clear. The tandem axle truck will have a dump body, we use those for main brake patching, for hauling stone, for hauling other materials, so. But the way the process works is, we put in our order with the international dealer, Thompson Truck and Trailer, they build the cab and chassis, they'll deliver it then to Benell Dixon, who will then construct the dump body and the snow plow and the other pieces for us. So the award to Thompson would be, again, fifty-five thousand, seven-eighty-seven, ninety-five for the cab and chassis, the award to Benell would be one hundred nine thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-two cents for the dump body, salt spreader, plow, and associated pieces. You can see down at the bottom, our total budget for this item was two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. The total purchase cost, which does include a few other accessories, which are highlighted on the second page as a summary, does include some additional equipment, is one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and four. The reason for the lower price is twofold, one, the cost of the truck was about fifteen thousand dollars less than we had budgeted, and the value of the trade-in was about sixteen thousand dollars more than we had anticipated. I believe we're getting thirty-one thousand dollars on the trade-in for the current truck, so. With that, I'd open it up to questions.
Mike, these were the, this one and the next one we're going to talk about, those were the two, at our last meeting, we said we would have to move on these fairly quickly in order for them to be useful into the upcoming season, correct? These were the two?
It's all about order deadlines and getting them built in time for the upcoming winter season, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I failed to mention our fleet mechanic, Alan Duncan, is here this evening too, if you have any other questions for Alan, he's much more familiar with the technical aspects of this.
I'm waiting for the vote to finish to see him smile.
You may see a Ron Santo heel clicking out of him. I guarantee we will, what do you say, Alan?
The GPS device that's referenced in the additional equipment, is that of the nature that would allow us to know where the truck is or what route it's on?
Pete.
Alan, would you like to, Alan, I think can address that better than I can.
Not for anyone else except the driver, it can map where he's been, especially for leaf pickup, a brush pickup, or snow plowing. The newer technology, I think, is safer also. If you go with things, GPS, with monitoring systems, that gets very, very expensive.
This is still a move up from what we have.
I think would be a first step towards that, trustee, again, the rest of the fleet doesn't have the capability right now, but it certainly might be a good test vehicle, et cetera. We haven't really gotten into how we would incorporate that, but certainly route tracking and route optimization are high on that list.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alan, while you're up, I just have a question, and Mike, you may have covered this, the next two items on the agenda, the dollar amounts are significantly different, and in reading the verbiage, I can't tell what the difference is in the two.
Oh, between the tandem and single axle?
Yeah, is that what it is?
Yeah, the second one would be single axle cab and chassis.
Much smaller vehicle.
Gotcha.
Much smaller vehicle, and all it would do is for us to plow snow, salt, and throw chloride. The tandem axle would be for the dump truck option on it, which would be used for leaf pickup, main brakes, all that other kind of stuff.
And so these I and J, the single axle, we plot, we use those in the winter and then they sit all summer?
Yes.
Okay.
What we had found, President Brawley, is we were purchasing a lot of dump body trucks and paying, and that, if you look at these two, it's really the difference in the Benell bids. The tandem is higher because we are purchasing a full dump body, hydraulic system, et cetera, plus some salt equipment. The single axle is, again, the V-box, which you probably are familiar with seeing, it's mounted right to the, to the chassis, so that's correct, we don't use them outside of winter operations. We feel with the two tandem axles, this one and the one that we already have, we have enough hauling and dumping capability, we just don't do a lot of that, so.
Okay.
It's a lot of iron dip sitting on the ground, but certainly necessary for winter operations.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions of Director Povens or Alan? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan.
With that, we'll, we'll take these one at a time, did you want to specifically go over I and J any differently?
It's a board's pleasure, if you'd like me to explain the single axle, it's very similar purchasing process, slightly different equipment.
And these are the highest priority of the vehicle purchases this year, so if all of the state funds were to get taken or swept this year, these would be the two that we would still want for this year.
Correct.
Okay.
I think we have three others that we're holding off on.
And if it ever becomes evident, or there's some delay in this, where you think we're not going to have it by this winter, delay it for the remainder of the year, because I think we're going to be tight on funds and our vehicle reserves?
And once we've placed the order, I think we're.
It's in, right? We're hooked on the money.
I believe we'll get a tentative delivery date when we place the order.
Yes, right now, build date for the cab and chassis is sometime early June, we'd get it by May first.
Okay. All right.
Alan has a text already on his phone, he just wants to hit enter. He's wanting.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of item G, which is waiver of bid and authorization to purchase.
So moved, second.
Moved by trustee Youngerman, second by trustee Marisack, call the roll please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
And don't send that text just yet, let's approve H.
So moved, second.
By Youngerman and Marisack, go ahead and call the roll please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Item I, the waiver of bid and authorization to purchase one, twenty sixteen International.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Marisack and Youngerman, again.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
That carries six zero. And lastly, item J, which is waiver of bid and award of contract to purchase one stainless steel V-box spreader.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Marisack and Youngerman, again.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
And that's six zero, thank you. Moving on, item K, award of a contract extension for lime residuals removal from Sinagro LLC of Baltimore, Maryland, and the amount of forty dollars and nine cents per dry ton for an estimated total of sixty-five thousand dollars. And with that, I will turn it over to Director Povens.
Thank you, President Brawley. In two thousand thirteen, we competitively bid this contract, it's for lime residuals, that's byproduct of our lime softening plant, it's stored out in the lagoons behind Public Works, we've had an annual contract to remove these residuals every year, they're then taken typically to farm fields where they're spread and act as a soil amendment for farmers, that's how we do it, some communities landfill theirs, we don't. But this, we do have an extension provision in the contract, which allows us to extend the contract for single-year periods, up to three years total, and we base the price increase on the Consumer Price Index. So my recommendation today is to enact that extension agreement, we would be paying one point six-two percent more than we did from the original bid. Last year, we paid thirty-nine dollars, forty-five cents per dry ton, this year it will be forty dollars and nine cents per dry ton, so fifty-four cents per ton increase, that's pretty modest. The estimated amount of, what do we say, sixty-five thousand dollars is based on our estimated production of lime residuals tonnage, that's pretty consistent from year to year, so, but we will pay the contract based on the actual tonnage removed. So with that, I'd open it up to questions.
Thank you. Any questions? This is an ongoing forever item that we'll have every year forever, right?
It's an ongoing task, yes, every year, we need to do this.
Yeah.
As long as we operate the lime softening plan on Mel Road.
Okay. And we stopped calling it lime sludge?
We did.
Okay. I'll note that. If there are no comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve item K.
Second.
Moved by Heinz, second by Lee, call the roll please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And that carries six zero, thank you. Item L, change of order for the two thousand fourteen MFT street maintenance program and Director Povens.
Thank you, President Brawley, what we're asking for approval tonight is a change order in the MFT expenditures, it would be an increase of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and nineteen cents. This is still under our original resolution that we passed earlier in the year. The additional amount is to, mainly for roadway patching and some contract balancing from last year's MFT program. So the first part is to balance out actual quantities from the contract last year, which we did some resurfacing. We do have some patching carryover that we want to do, and we've actually, due to the winter season, we've added to that quantity somewhat, so we've talked to Geneva Construction, they've extended that price to us, the MFT contract price for patching, so the additional funds will go primarily towards that. We are going to have them do some other work, that we will spend some money, about ten thousand dollars on our street and alley maintenance fund, there are several patches on Route thirty-one that because they are utility patches for water main brake repairs, we can't use MFT funding for, so, but we are going to have that work done under the MFT, by the MFT contractor. So again, the request is to approve an additional thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and nineteen cents in MFT funds. I would open it to questions.
The railroad crossing that's got some pothole problems, are we working to address that, or will that be, I know that that's not?
Actually, Engineer Wallers has been working on some funding for that.
We've, we've made a request to be in the grant program that ICC administers for crossing repair, and we've not heard whether we're, we received a grant yet, they don't issue very many of those, and I don't know if some of them are being held up for other reasons, so we're going to continue to pursue a grant for that crossing repair, so it's really going to depend, we did budget monies for a match for, if we do get the grant, we'll be responsible for some approach paving as part of that, so we're hopeful, but we don't know for sure.
Does quality of existing pavement factor into that at all, or not really?
Condition of the crossing is certainly part of it, and as you may recall, we've written letters to both the, the State of Illinois and the ICC indicating that the crossing is getting to be dangerous, and it is one of our critical crossings for our fire service, and we've mentioned that, so unfortunately, there, you know, are other crossings in the state as well that may be of equal or worse condition that we're not aware of, so.
It's tough to see this, that crossing or that intersection, and then the ICC program that we are having to administer on their behalf for that other crossing that goes to one house?
It's, yes.
Yes.
That's frustrating, because that money could be spent in other locations.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything that we can do to help in that grant process at this time?
Probably want to send out another round of letters to ICC to indicate that we're very concerned, so I would, we'll probably go through that same process again.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Do you think public letters?
I don't, you know, I don't know, I suppose it wouldn't hurt, certainly, that's, I don't know for sure, though.
If you have the sense that it would help, maybe the village could post that on the Facebook, who to write to and how to do it, and?
I'll talk to the representative from ICC, who's our contact, and see what his opinion is on that, and if he thinks it's in our best interest, I'll relay that back to the, to the board.
Okay, trustee Heinz?
Yeah, you mean those extra patches they put on Briar Cliff in about five or six different spots? That's thirty-five thousand dollars for that?
We haven't, this work hasn't been done.
Pardon me?
The work, the work that falls in here has not been done.
Yeah, it's. It's not been done?
Right, we.
This would be new patches.
Well, they better fix Briar Cliff pretty soon, because that's going to be falling apart in no time, it's got holes all over it again, needs to be patched.
I think we're doing some patching on that, and we're also looking at a possible resurfacing, it'll be a couple of years out, but.
Yep, a couple more years before you do that road?
Most likely.
Pardon me?
Most likely.
I think it's got to be fixed before then, that road's been in there longer than a lot of these other streets, and that's a well-traveled road, it's probably one of the most traveled road around here.
Mm-hmm.
That's got to be fixed before two years, it's just, every year you put that off, the prices are going to go up.
If there are no other comments, I entertain a motion to approve item L.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bond, second by Marisack, call the roll please.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
No.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And that carries five one, thank you. Last item for separate action this evening, we have award of a contract through the Kane County bid to perform traffic control, to Perform Traffic Control Systems Limited, is that their name, Perform Traffic Control Systems?
Preform.
Preform, oh, there you go. Preform Traffic Control Systems Limited of Elk Grove, Illinois, for pavement marking services for an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars, and I know this is our pretty standard, but.
This is, you may recognize this from previous years, Kane County does a county-wide bid for pavement striping, and for a number of years, they've awarded it to Preform as the lowest competitive bidder. They allow villages and other communities to take advantage of those bid prices, so my recommendation tonight is that we accept that opportunity and hire Preform to do our pavement striping up to our budget amount of twenty-two thousand dollars. We generally work with their staff, they help us doing some of the analysis of the roads, and we have ideas where we need some for certain. Our budgeted amount does not allow us to re-stripe everything in the community, so we try to identify areas of low reflectivity and, you know, poor visibility. So again, this is, we've worked with Preform for a number of years now, so again, pretty So again, this is, we've worked with Preform for a number of years now, so again, pretty straightforward. This work would be done sometime this summer. I haven't talked to them about schedule, but obviously when weather is better.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Marisak, second by Trustee Youngerman. Is there any discussion on that? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep.
Trustee Hines? Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Thank you. That carries six zero. We don't have any items for discussion on the agenda. I'll move on to new or unfinished business. Does anybody have any to come before the board? Hearing none. Future meetings, beautification meeting Wednesday, April fifteenth. We have HBC on April tenth, and the committee, the whole meeting for next Tuesday, the twenty-first, has been canceled. We canceled that under consent. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session and discuss employment of an employee pursuant to five ILC CS one twenty over two C one.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bond, second by Youngerman. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling? Trustee Lee? Trustee Hines? Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Trustee Hines, second by Trustee Youngerman.
Trustee Hines? Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling? Trustee Lee?
And we're adjourned. Thank you. I adjourn before you could mess around with the vote.